All right, I now call to order the September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting of the Wellington, uh, Town of Wellington Board of Trustees, time being six thirty P M. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mister Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Teets.
Here.
Trustee Mason.
Here.
Trustee Gator. Trustee Daly.
Present.
Trustee Wigan.
Here.
Mayor Pretzam McDonald.
Here.
Mayor Shosse.
Here.
Thank you, we have a quorum.
Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening?
No.
Any conflicts of interest with the agenda this evening? All right, next we will move on to public comment. Um, those wishing to comment on non-agenda items, uh, please sign at the sheet podium, um, and then state your name for the record into the microphone and, um, everyone provide the comments will be given three minutes to speak. Going once. Going twice. So. All right, next we will have a proclamation for the Finance, uh, and Accounting and Appreciation Week. Uh, Mister Nick or David, uh, the Chairperson for the Finance Committee and a member of the Town Finance Staff, will receive this proclamation on behalf of the town. Whereas the Office of Finance and Accounting is a time honored and vital part of local government that impacts the day-to-day life of citizens throughout the town, and whereas the Finance and Accounting Staff provide the necessary financial information to governing bodies and agencies at the local county and state levels. And whereas Finance and Accounting Staff Administrator, um, administer the procedures to keep the financial records that allow governing bodies to carry out public functions efficiently and with confidence. And whereas the Finance and Accounting Staff are the official custodians responsible for the proper management and investment of public funds. And whereas the Town of Wellington recognizes September twenty-fifth through the twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three as Finance and Accounting Appreciation Week to the meticulous finance team for all their diligent, hard work and dedication. Now therefore, I, Kaler Shosse, Mayor of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, do hereby proclaim, September twenty-fifth through the twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three as Finance and Accounting Appreciation Week. And I encourage all residents to recognize the dedicated efforts of the finance professionals and the appreciation for their many efforts. I further extend thanks to the Finance Staff, including Miss Janice Foster, Miss Angela Co., Mister Jeremy Boaters, and Mister Don Rhodes, and to the members of our Volunteer Finance Committee, um, for their service to the Town of Wellington. In witness wherefore, I hereby to set my hand to cause the seal of the Town of Wellington to be affixed to this September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Take a moment, we're getting a picture here, so be patient. Yeah, wait.
Picture, Mister.
Picture. Okay. Don't be running off.
Would you, would you please hold your, thank you. Thanks.
Angela, how's they getting in the picture statement?
Thank you.
All right, and now I will close the regular meeting and open the Liquor License Authority Board, time being six thirty-four P M. Make it a roll call, Mister Clerk.
Trustee Daly.
Present.
Trustee Teets.
Here.
Trustee Mason.
Here.
Trustee Wigan.
Here.
Trustee Gator.
Here.
Mayor Pretzam McDonald.
Here.
Mayor Shosse.
Here.
Thank you.
Mister Clerk will be presenting.
Good evening, Mayor Shosse and Trustees. Um, Ethan Moose, the Town Clerk, it's my pleasure to present this item to you this evening. Uh, tonight you will be considering in the Liquor License Authority Board an application from, uh, El Mescal Inc. doing business as Sol de Jalisco Mexican Restaurant. Um, I'll, I'll go through the process for, uh, public hearing procedures, but before we get too far into this, I'd like to offer the opportunity for the members of the Board to disclose any conflicts of interest that you may have in this matter. Ex parte communications. Thank you. Specific to this item, uh, Sol de Jalisco Mexican Restaurant has submitted an application for modification of their liquor license premises. The application is separate from, but related to the recent license renewal, uh, with approval, um, with approval and licenses issued in August of twenty twenty-three. Sol de Jalisco has a hotel and restaurant city liquor license with a current expiration date of August seventh, twenty twenty-four. The business has legal possession of the premise, uh, and the patio immediately adjacent to their currently licensed premises, and previously applied for and received a temporary modification of premise of this patio, uh, during the COVID nineteen pandemic to include the, to include that patio. Uh, the application before you today represents that same adjustment of the premise. But in, instead of as a temporary modification, it is a permanent modification in this application. Uh, in making your decision with respect to any proposed changes, you must consider whether the premises, uh, modified will meet the requirements of the Colorado L- liquor code. And factors to be taken into account by you, uh, when considering this modification should include the reasonable requirements, um, of the neighborhood and the desires of the adult inhabitants, the possession by the licensee of the changed premises by ownership, lease, rental, or other arrangement, compliance with applicable zoning laws of the municipality, and compliance with the, uh, distance prohibition in regard to any public or par- pariaical school in the principal campus of any college, university, or seminary. I would also note that all applicable fees have been paid and, uh, notice requirements have been accomplished in a call, in accordance with the Colorado revised statutes, uh, requirements for notice for this item. Okay, um, with the staff introduction complete at this point, uh, Mister Mayor, it would be appropriate to invite the applicant to make an, uh, initial presentation to the Board.
Come on up.
Hello, everyone, I'm Myrna Rodriguez and my son Omar Rodriguez who runs the restaurant here in Wellington.
Awesome. Do you guys have anything you wanted to present to us this evening?
Sir, we collected a couple petitions from our.
People in Wellington.
People in Wellington, you know, that are behind us and that would like for patio to be extended, or liquor license to be extended out to the patio. We want these to.
Yeah, you can just pass it down, I mean.
We also did some invites, or Omar did, but I don't think anyone showed.
Okay.
I think everyone's busy with practices and stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, makes sense.
Or at the restaurant.
Right, right. Does, uh, anybody from the Board have questions for the applicants? No? I think that's all we need, we'll give this back to you, wants to go and mix its rounds. And then Mister Moose, could you continue?
Thank you, Mayor Shosse. I'm happy to take that and enter it into the record for you if you would like, after the, uh, the Board's completed reviewing it, please. Um, at this point it'd be appropriate to ask any general questions that you might have of me, uh, and then proceed to a public hearing on this item.
The only question I have is, I don't think that we did this back, we did the temporary, but just confirming all the, um, setbacks are met from the appropriate s- schools, et cetera.
Um, I don't have a solid answer for you on what specific setbacks would apply to that this evening, uh, but I, I do know that they are fully in compliance with, um, their requirements for liquor license with the state of Colorado at this point, and I believe that the temporary license also, uh, was, was applicable to, to those setbacks as well.
Thank you. All right, individuals wishing to comment on this item, please sign in the sheet, approach the podium, and stick your name for the record. Going once, going twice, sold. All right, we'll now close, or I, did I open that? I didn't start that over. I need to open the public hearing for the Liquor Board, time being six forty P M. Anybody wishing to speak, please approach the, the podium and stick your name for the record. Okay, I will now close the public hearing, time being six forty P M. Any final comments?
Um, at this point, since you have accomplished the public hearing, uh, you have a few options for what to consider, uh, in, in this application. If you believe that the requirements are satisfied, uh, as mentioned previously for, um, meeting the needs and desires of the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood, then you have, uh, the staff would recommend approval of this item. Uh, additionally, you have other options available, those are published in the pack, and I'm happy to go over those if you'd like to discuss other, other motions or options.
Perfect, thank you. Um, start with Trustee Daly.
As, uh, I move that we approve the Sol de Jalisco modification of premises application.
A second. Mister Clerk, may I get a roll call?
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Mayor Pretzam McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously and the license application is approved.
Thank you. All right, I now close the Liquor License Authority Board, time being six forty-one P M. All right, next we will have a presentation on the Boards and Commissions' Appointment Process by Miss, Mister Ethan Moose, Town Clerk, Mister Moose.
Thank you, Mayor Shosse, give me one moment to get this, uh, presentation filled up.
You got it.
Okay, it's not letting me share my screen on Zoom, um, so I apologize, I'll just go ahead and proceed through this without, oh, there we go, wonderful. Okay, um, good evening again, Ethan Moose, Town Clerk, my pleasure to present this item to you this evening. Uh, this is the agenda for what we'll discuss. We'll go over some background and framing information, then discuss briefly applicable regulations for, uh, Boards and Commissions of the Town. The specific examples that we'll, uh, discuss for that item will be, uh, the Planning Commission, the Board of Adjustment, the Parks, Recreation, Open Space and Trails Board, Housing Authority, and the Finance Committee. Uh, we'll then discuss some feedback that, um, staff have, have canvassed from the current Board Chairpersons, and then, uh, discuss a couple, um, current and alternative appointment processes. So proceeding to the background and framing information, um, it's key to note that the appointment process has changed over time, uh, and at the direction from Mayor staff have reviewed the appointment process, uh, and provided this presentation to you this evening. Um, the purpose and scope of this presentation is exclusively oriented toward, uh, providing relevant information that, that would be useful in standardizing the appointment process if the Board should so choose to do that. Okay, um, we'll now proceed to discussing applicable regulations, uh, in the case of the Planning Commission and the Board of Adjustment, the Colorado Revised Statutes Title Thirty-One, Article Twenty-three, Part Two discusses the, uh, regulatory requirements of the state, and then, uh, our municipal code further modifies those required, further, uh, modifies and specifies the requirements. I'm not going to read all those bullet points off to you, but, um, they're there for your reference if you would like them. Uh, the Planning Commission is mentioned, has a similar structure, excuse me, the Board of Adjustment has a very similar, uh, regulatory structure. The Finance Committee, um, and, and subsequent boards won't have statutory requirements, but the, the applicable code sections in our municipal code are listed for your reference. Uh, Press Board and the Housing Authority. Uh, and then I would just, I would just point out, there are a few, uh, differences just in terms of the terms that, uh, the municipal code establishes for members of, members appointments between each of these different boards. Okay, um, in our current process for appointments, we advertise, uh, vacant applications for a period of approximately three weeks, uh, and then applicants are scheduled for an interview with the Board. Um, the Chairperson of the applicable commission and then the staff liaison, and then appointments are made by resolution, at least in, during my tenure, it's, uh, been made via resolution on consent, uh, and then appointments are formally, formalized when the Mayor signs them. These are a couple of alternative processes, uh, that staff have identified after researching, um, system municipalities here in the state of Colorado. Uh, in the case of alternate process one, this comes out of Berthardt, basically occurs, uh, with an interview committee that, um, is formed of two elected officials, the Chairperson and then a staff liaison. Uh, that interview committee then makes a recommendation to the Board about appointments for individuals to, uh, applicable, the applicable boards or commissions, uh, and then again, made by resolution, formalized with the Mayor's signature. The other alternative process to highlight this evening comes out of severance, uh, and that basically includes more, uh, a more formalized interview process incorporated with the regular meetings. Um, applicants are scheduled for interview and provided information to which they must respond. That information then gets incorporated into the packets, uh, then those individuals come before the Board, and the Board publicly votes to memorialize the appointment. Uh, and then there are other variations across Colorado, uh, for example, vice chairs, um, of Boards have been, uh, have taken the place of the Chair to interview, um, the, the Chair's term vacancy. Uh, staff may or may not be present, there, there are other variations. Okay, um, just to cover briefly some committee chair feedback, um, after speaking with the Chairpersons of, of the Boards mentioned, uh, almost all of them would recommend, uh, implementing a process standard, and then we received mixed feedback regarding, um, which of the three sort of proposed processes, current, alternative one, and alternative two. Largely, the preference, uh, from their perspective was, uh, to either retain the current process or move toward an alternate process one with an interview committee. Uh, they were largely, they would largely recommend against incorporating it formally into the regular meetings as is, uh, specified in alternate process two. And then they were largely supportive of including the Board Chair in the interview. They did also note that there are some challenges given the sort of term structures of the Board and the, the variations between them, um, and then they also were supportive of using a Vice Chair Secretary to interview, uh, a Chair's term expiration when applicable. Okay, at this point, uh, the real question is, uh, is there any feedback that the Board would like to provide staff in regards to the standardization or codification of the appointment process? Um, and then specific guidance that we can take away and, and action, uh, moving forward?
Trustee Teets?
Um, I actually really like the process that we utilize now where we have an option to attend, or if I'm out of town and I can't attend, then I know we have people showing up regularly for the interview process. I like that it involves all of the elected officials and not just a certain assigned amount. Um, I think all of us bring different questions when we do go into those interviews, which is beneficial because we all have a different kind of background experience. Um, I do agree with not putting the interviews up in front of public. That's, would probably discourage, I feel, a lot of people from doing that, is being pretty much put in the hot seat. So, um, I support the way it is now with our Board of Seven having the option with Town Staff selecting appointment times and telling us this is when you can show up if you would like to be a part of the interview. Um, I like Town Staff being involved in those interviews, and I also support the Board Chair to be involved there, the ones that are, their feedback is just as important. They're going to be working alongside the people that we interview, so I think that's important as well. So that's kind of my take on it.
Um, are you in support of putting a standardized and codifying a process?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Wigan?
I think either one or current is, uh, satisfactory. Uh, I like it where we have the options where we can have everybody, all the trustees show up. Uh, one thing I would like to have is the Chairperson from each committee. And yeah, codifying definitely.
Perfect, thank you. Mayor Pretzam?
Excellent presentation, well put together, thank you for that information. I appreciate the alternative options. Um, I definitely support codifying. I think consistency is important, that way the applicants can know how to prepare and, uh, know what to expect when they're applying for positions. It was mentioned that, you know, it's uncomfortable to put applicants up in front of the Board of Trustees in a, in a public meeting, but as we all know, any time more than three of us meet, we have to call it a meeting. So I don't really see how the current process is solving that particular problem. We do a pretty good job scheduling it and providing a location, you know, that's not in this boardroom setting, but my preference is alternative one.
Thank you. Trustee Mason?
Um, I, I, there is a lot of good things about the current process, I mean, the, the idea that we're all able to attend and that sort of thing, I, I, I do rather like that. Um, I, I would concur with my fellow trustees that, you know, alternative process two and having folks come in front of a regular meeting, I think is kind of difficult. I, I would still prefer to see, whether they have to be announced or not, um, I would still prefer to see that it's in a location that's not, uh, quite so formalized, so the way that we do it in the background, back room now, uh, I actually, I actually do that, do like that a lot, so, um, I would say, uh, the current process is just fine with me, or, uh, I could get behind alternative pro- uh, process one if that's what the rest of the Board would end up doing. Um, and I do support, uh, the Board Chairs being involved in the interview, it's very important to get their feedback. Um, but yeah, uh, codifying process is needed, so.
Trustee Daly?
I agree with most of the statements, is in front of a, a public meeting is not, um, very comfortable. Also, not great for scheduling with candidates, so not everybody can attend these times and places. So, um, I appreciate our current, uh, process in that our entire Board is invited but not required to participate. The reason why is these outstanding residents who want to volunteer and contribute to our town have great ideas and important information. So when we're interviewing them, we actually learn more from them than they learn from us, I would say. So regardless of if they even end up serving on that, we, we got thirty minutes to talk to a resident about something they care about deeply, so I think that's a great opportunity. If we do have a committee, then we all should be optional within that committee. Um, included within those interviews, I think is, I, I, I would almost have to insist on is, of course, the Chair or whatever leadership role is mentioned is the alternates here, if the Chair is actually the position being interviewed for, um, and then also the staff liaison, because they bring so much information and knowledge to the process, so I agree in codifying. I do question though that all of these are not the same, some of them are not like the others. For example, the Board of Adjustment is a completely different beast than it is for other advisory committees. It is a separate function. Um, I don't know if that should qualify within the same standards that we're applying to advisory boards. So I'd like to make that clarification when we're codifying as to what are advisory boards, and therefore that is the process associated with an advisory board. So that's the one piece that I want to put out there, but otherwise I am, um, mostly, of course, as we kind of discussed, existing process codifying, um, and then keeping the appropriate liaisons, um, is primarily, uh, or people, a part of the interviewing process is the Chair and staff liaison.
Thank you. Trustee Gator?
Thank you, um, so I guess I'll share my thoughts, and then I do have a couple of questions. Um, I'd agree with what most of us said, I know we as a Board came up with the current process, and I think it's a good process because it allows us each to have a choice, as was said, right? We don't have to show up, right? We can choose to show up if we're out of town, and I think from a scheduling standpoint, it should never be something that staff stressing out about, don't try to schedule it around us, you just let us know, here's the time, and if we can make it, we can make it, if we can't, no problem. But I do appreciate, like, I'm not involved with the Parks and Recreation Open Space Board, I don't go to their meetings, I'm not the liaison, but I'm able to hear these ideas from the people that we're interviewing, and it is, like Trustee Daly said, it's very powerful to help, like, wow, these are great ideas that are coming into my town, and it gives me good confidence that, hey, we've got great people on these Board, they're doing great things. And it also, when it comes to me to, to vote for approving something, even if it's just on a consent agenda, it's great to know, hey, I sat there in that interview or I heard about that person, I'm excited about having them on that Board. So I think our process is good as it is, I think we should continue that. Um, I agree having the staff there as a liaison, so their opportunity to share their input and having the Chair or Vice Chair, you know, if the Chair can't make it, they can have someone else come in, because, right, they know the personalities that are, and that has been helpful in some of our interviews where the Chair has been able to say, you know, knowing some of the personalities on the Board, both are great candidates, but I think this person would be the better fit. And that's power, because we don't know that, right? We're not sitting especially in Boards like the Planning Commission or Board of Adjustments, we're not involved with those at all, um, so I think that's important. And then I do agree with Trustee Daly, where I think we do need to, if we are going to standardize, we do need to note, like, the Board of Adjustments and Planning Commission both have quasi-judicial portions within them versus all our others are advisory, so maybe we have, this is what we do with the advisory boards, this is what we do with our quasi-judicial Board, so we can kind of have consistency with, in each area. Then my question is, is when, I know, because we started this process a while ago, trying to get things consistent across the Board, so I guess I'm trying to understand, what are we looking to codify? When we say we want to codify things, what is that, what are you looking for? Because I can say codifying is great, but I'm like, what are we talking about, trying to get the same?
So, thank you for your question. Um, after speaking with Mister Sapienza, the, his recommendation was basically that we create a sort of set of rules and, and processes that are written down that clearly identify what the, uh, interview and application process looks like, and then provide individuals with relevant information regarding what the requirements of their appointment would entail, uh, and, and making sure that basically they're aware and have a reference document, um, to, to look at, to, to help make those clarifications, if that makes sense.
So basically, we're codifying the process they're going to go through, right? You're going to be interviewed, here's who you can expect in the interview, then you'll be notified, and you'll be, got it. Thank you, that's what I was looking for, yes, I agree, that would be great to have the consistent process, and, uh, like Trustee Daly said, just maybe separating out if there are any differences. Appointment process, maybe there's not a need to be difference between the two, I thought we were talking about, like, overall, like, terms of the Boards and things like that, but if we do need to separate out the quasi-judicial from the advisory boards to do that.
Yes, thank you, Trustee Gator, hi- his recommendation specifically was basically to, to create a policy and approve it via resolution, uh, with, with that relevant information, so.
Um, I don't know if either of you said you were okay with vice chairs, or you're good? You're good, all good, cool. Yeah, so I mean, um, I think all the directions been given, I mean, the Board's pretty unanimous. Uh, Trustee Daly?
For the non-advisory boards, I would recommend alternate process two.
Oh, yes, uh, it's just, B O A is the only one with an alt, are you talking about the alternate chair? Or a different process from?
Alternate process two for?
Associated with Planning Commission and B O A.
The quasi-judicial boards.
Yeah, quasi-judicial boards, I think, should be public processes, so I think that would be appropriate.
Hmm, okay, to do this in a public meeting, I get it.
Yeah.
Um, those are, advisory boards are fantastic and very important, these are folks who have, like, legal decisions on behalf of town, so.
Yeah.
I think, uh, that would be appropriate, personally.
Would you want to do it like in a formal setting, like, we're sitting up here, or like a work session where we've kind of got like the U-table, just not quite as much, or?
I did it at the podium when I did.
Okay.
It was incredibly, it was incredibly nerve-wracking, but, um, that's kind of how those positions are, though, too. So that might be.
Kind of vet some.
Yeah, a vetting process in itself, so I might recommend that for those quasi-judicial positions.
Yeah.
I'm good either way, she makes a good point on a reason to do that, I, I'm okay doing it into the current process, but that is a good point, they, as we've seen this last year, you might be in the hot seat.
Yeah.
If you're on one of those boards.
With the exception of it says no committee chair, but I would, I would challenge that to have the Chair of those specific Boards involved in the interview as well. So alternate process two for quasi-judicial boards with the Chair would be the only difference that, that I would suggest if we were looking for a very specific direction.
My only question regarding that is, then when we do speak with the Chair, Vice Chair that is interviewing, typically when we sit and discuss, it's after an interview where we kind of run through all of the applicants and have that deep-down discussion with the Chair, Vice Chair. How do you do that when you're having it during a public?
You do it in a public meeting.
Yeah.
Got it, okay, so and the other thing that I would, um, ask for with this is, oh, I lost it, because I got stuck on my other question now, um, just make. just making sure that when we are laying out the steps and requirements that previous board members are notified, like literally put it in there, their position will expire. They need to reapply. I think that's a huge one, and it's been a few issues in the past that have been caused by that. So just making sure it states specifically where a piece of paper they sign that you have to reapply for your position if you are interested, whether you're an alternate or a board member.
Good direction, good direction.
And I think though, and I, maybe I missed this, but the fact to make sure alternates are notified if a full member position is available. Thank you.
Thank you for your feedback. Appreciate the direction. I, I don't have anything additional for you at this point.
Awesome. Thank you very much. All right, next we will have a presentation on the appointment of members to the Wellington Community Housing Authority, presented by Ms. Garcia and Ms. Truly Princess. Or Bruin, sorry. What am I doing? It even was written down, Bruin.
So you'll, my, my piece of this will be short. Um, you'll find in your packet tonight. So, thank you, Mayor and Trustees Patty Garcia, Town Administrator. You'll find in your packet tonight, information regarding the appointment of members to the Wellington Community Housing and how their appointments may affect the financial reporting in the town's audit. Currently, the Board of Trustees make appointments to the Housing Authority and those individuals are automatically appointed to Wellington Community Housing. I found the issue of the component unit audit to be somewhat complicated for me. I, I've tried to understand. I've talked to multiple people and felt like the best course of direction would be to have Wellington Housing Authority come and make a presentation on this item. Their attorney, um, their attorney Jim Martel is here. Um, Brad March, who was part of the process back in twenty nineteen is here. And Mr. Don Rhodes, who's our Finance Director and Treasurer, has done some research on this and has some, uh, some comments to make as well. So I would like to invite Ms. Bruin to this dais and she can tell you a little bit more about this.
Good evening, trustees.
Hello.
Nice to see you. Well, let's see if I can help clarify all of this. I, I'd like to start by introducing myself. I'm Julie Bruin, the CEO of Housing Catalyst, and I've met most of you. I've been there twenty some years. Housing Catalyst is the housing authority for the city of Fort Collins, Laramore County, the town of Wellington, and we also operate veterans programs and some other housing assistance in Weld County now. And we have been managing the Wellington Housing Authority for over twenty years as well. Um, I just wanted to mention to you that housing authorities are formed under state enabling legislation that really came out of the nineteen thirty seven Housing Act. And your housing authority was formed in nineteen sixty five. Um, a group of citizens created a petition and the Town Board of Trustees put the incorporation, uh, agreement and documents together. Robert Icestone served as the first chairman of the Wellington Housing Authority, and we all know that name quite well. So you've had forty-two units in your housing authority's portfolio since that time in what is called HUD's Public Housing Program. Public Housing Program is, uh, a program whereby HUD held the deed of trust to these properties in exchange for annual subsidy. That program has been chronically underfunded for at least twenty years. We had an opportunity, um, and came to you in twenty nineteen asking for, um, support in going through HUD's disposition program where we changed that old public housing subsidy, got rid of that contract and moved into more of a voucher type subsidy through the Section Eight program. That program is much more stable. It's usually funded, uh, much better by Congress, whereas public housing was underfunded. And it more than doubled the operating subsidy. Here's the catch. HUD's Section eighteen of the HUD regs said that those properties must be transferred into a new entity. So we set up a separate five oh one C three Wellington Community Housing for the sole purpose of holding this asset of these forty-two units. You all decided at the time that you wanted to continue to appoint both boards and have control over, we want to keep the Wellington Housing Authority intact should we ever have opportunity to use again. And you wanted control over appointing that separate five oh one C three board. And for all intensive purposes, intense and purposes, you have made those one in the same board members. Five board members under state statute. The mayor is an acting member more than a liaison. He's a full voting member of the board. We went through an audit, uh, the first year's audit, and the audit firm of Ida Bailey did not catch this the first time. Starting the second year's audit, they said that because the Board of Trustees appoints the five oh one C three board, it needs to be shown as a component unit in your financials and your audit. So that's the key. You have a couple of options. You can discuss the impact to your financials of holding those assets, those forty-two units, that, that real estate asset and its um, corresponding liabilities on your books and as a component unit. Another option that you have is, um, to allow the Wellington Community Housing Board to self appoint. If you do that, there are a couple of backstops for you. Right now, the bylaws say that if that entity, that new five oh one C three entity ever dissolves, all of its assets revert back to the Housing Authority and you appoint the Housing. You could ask, uh, we could add another clause to those bylaws that also say any real estate transactions must be approved by the Housing Authority, which you control. So you have a couple of options. You can really understand what are the impacts of showing these forty-two rental units on your, on your books. Or you can consider, um, allowing the five oh one C three to self appoint. The risk is, let's say they start appointing other people. In Fort Collins, we had the same situation and it was just a matter of practice and it worked well for almost thirty years, I think. Because it's really, they work hand in hand. They don't, they don't function without each other. So there wouldn't really be a point for the board members to appoint different members and try to sell the assets. Um, it's a risk. You, you lose a little bit of control because you're not actually making those appointments. But you have some ways to safeguard. So I'll pause right there and, um, see if you have any questions for me. My guess is most of your questions are going to be for your own finance people.
Yeah, Trusty Gator, have any questions?
Yeah, so just to clarify, so we had to point five people to the Wellington Housing Authority and then we would give them the authority to then appoint the other five oh one C three or we would initially appoint the five oh one C three and then the five oh one C three does its own thing regardless of who's on the Housing Authority.
The, the latter, and you have already appointed the nonprofit board.
Okay.
It's the same members.
Got it.
But you, but you already did that.
So we've appointed five people to the five oh one C three. Moving forward, they would just do their own thing, more or less.
And under a gentleman's agreement, they would be one in the same.
Okay.
As the ones that you appointed to the authority.
Okay.
Per your new process.
Per new process, okay. Uh, that is, what abilities, so I know you talked about we can put in requirements for real estate transactions. What does the board of that five oh one C three have authority to do?
Well, right now, all property management and real estate transactions. You could put in approval clause that the authority must also approve real estate transactions.
Okay.
The time that may come up is that we're starting to dig into that portfolio to really see if there are opportunities to, you know, we have some duplexes scattered around. Maybe it makes sense to sell a couple of duplexes, take those proceeds, leverage them into new construction if that's ever an opportunity. That would be the only time those assets would be sold, would be to leverage additional affordable housing for your community.
I'd just like to hear our financial side of it. Thank you.
Thank you. I, may I add one more piece? The Wellington Housing Authority has been a HUD high performing housing authority since I've been here twenty plus years. And so you've never had any problems or concerns from a HUD perspective.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, one question. If you, if there was a vacancy on the the board, who would fill that vacancy under your scenario? Would it be, currently it would be this board. Under your scenario, it would be the Housing Authority Board?
It would be that board.
Okay, so they just fill internally?
They self, they self, they self point.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Right. Yeah.
Thank you. Kristi Mason, you have any questions?
Well, I, I guess, I, I would maybe be a little bit concerned about giving up s- some of that control there. But again, I, I would want to hear from Mr. Rhodes as far as what, what he would consider the financial impacts to be.
Representative Tim? Kristi, begin?
Yeah, I agree with, uh, Trustee Mason. That would be my only concern. You know, we had, need to have some type of avenue to get back in if we're seeing mismanagement or whatever else. So that would be my only concern.
Thank you. Trustee, any questions?
No, it's good seeing you again. Um, no, I don't have any questions for her.
Perfect. Thank you for that presentation. I think we'll get Mr. Don Rhodes up here.
Evening, Mayor Board. Um, so I, I have, um, some research so far. I learned about this, uh, particular incident, um, today. So did a little bit of looking into it, uh, this afternoon. And so many of my comments are based on a little bit of research and just, uh, experience, um, over the years. Um, typically with a component unit, the fact that, um, this board appoints the board of the community housing um, is a element that's looked at, what auditors would look at to say, is this a component unit or not? Uh, however, at least in my opinion, it's not, it's not the only, um, element. I, I spoke with the, um, auditor, uh, from, of community housing this afternoon. And she, she was under the impression that the Board of Community Housing was the same people as this board. And i- in that case, it, it, it's clearly a, a, a component unit because there's, the decision making is the same. Uh, when I told her, well, no, just, just the mayor sits on the other board. Uh, she said, okay, well, that might be different. And essentially she wanted to go look into it some more and, and see what was going on there. Because, uh, you know, at, at the end of the day, it kind of comes down to, um, and, and the Gatsby, Gatsby thirty-nine, if I remember, um, it says, y- you want to make sure at the end of the day that if somebody picks up the town of Wellington's financial statements and reads it and sees that the, um, how, the community housing is a component unit of that. And so the assets are part of the town's books and the revenues are part of the town's books and the expenditures are part of the town's books. That that wouldn't be misleading to them because that would imply that there's control there. There's, u- usually in, in my experience, at least when I've seen component units, there was not only the, uh, appointment of the board element of it, but usually the nonprofit would come by the board at least once a year and say, here's our budget. Um, and then the board would bless the budget, approve the budget, maybe make changes. There'd be a, a, another element of control uh, or oversight than just appointing the board. So, uh, appointing the board is an element, uh, of it. And especially the fact that you can not only appoint the board, but replace members should they leave. That, that does c- imply some control. Uh, so I think that's what they're getting at. And so when their auditor does some more research, they may very well come back and say, well, the fact that you can not only appoint the board, but also replace board members, that implies some control. Uh, so they may end up coming back and deciding the same thing. But I, I, I think it, it comes down to, you know, what is it? What is it that, uh, the community housing does? And how much control does the board have? And if you're looking at the financial statements, because what a component unit is, is you would add another column. And so you have your, you know, your general fund and your enterprise funds and your special revenue funds, there'd be another column for community housing. And it would show the assets and it would show the revenues and expenses as if it was part of the city, as if it was something that you have control over. And so the budget would be there, the assets would be there. And so we have to ask, you know, does the board have control over the assets and the budget and that sort of thing. And so it's, it's, it's not a, I wish I could give you a super clear answer, but uh, the fact that the board, that, that this board appoints that board and can replace the board members is kind of, I think, what they're, what they're looking at. Now, the fact that they thought the two boards were the same, that seemed to, uh, give her pause. So I think she wanted to go back and look and see, okay, if that's not the case, there is this other thing. You can replace board members. She wanted to run that up the, the pole on their end and see if, uh, if that still made sense. Um, so that, that's what I learned in like literally this, this afternoon. Um, I, I, I think what she was acting for was time to, to look and see my, my, and I, I don't, um, I don't know what the board's desire is on this. I don't really, uh, have a, you know, uh, have too strong of opinion one way or the other. If, if it made sense to put it in the financial statements, okay, it's another column in the financial statements. We can do that. But for me, I'm kind of, I'm protective of the financial statements to the point that if, if a reader's looking at it and they say, oh, okay, there's, there's that column for the community housing, I guess the town must have, you know, co- control over that. They must a- approve the budget. They must be deeply involved in the expenditures and, you know, maybe there's a financial relationship. And if the, uh, community housing were to quit whatever, I guess the town gets all of that. Um, you know, i- I don't know if, I don't know if that's the case or not because I, I haven't been able to research that much. But that's, that's kind of where I would end up is, um, i- is it, does it make sense for it to be reported? Because it, it's, is kind of a gray area. I mean, there's, uh, the Gatsby third in actually says there's professional judgment involved in whether or not a component unit, uh, ought to be, ought to be added. It, most of accounting is pretty black and white and, you know, you can add things up, debits and credits. Uh, in this case, you do have to apply some judgment with at the end of the day, looking at the financial statements, is that an accurate picture? Does the board have, uh, you know, control and authority to that extent that it ought to be included in the financial statements? Um, so I don't, I don't want to make it sound, it's, it's not, accounting wise, it's not a, a big deal to put it in, an extra column in there. Um, it's more just the perception and what the readers of the financial statements would, would take away from seeing that that was in there as opposed to uh, community having, community, uh, housing having its own financial statements read separately. Uh, so that was a, a little bit rambling. Sorry about that, but happy to try to answer any questions.
Trusty Gator?
So I guess, I think for me, it's pretty simple from the standpoint, is it going to increase the cost of the town in any way if it is included as, like, are we looking at, hey, our audit cost is going to go up or our accounting costs are going up if it's included as a component unit or is it just, it's how it's reported?
It, the audit costs would go up a little bit because there'd have to be some coordination between community housing, because it's a separate five oh one C three. It has its own audit. And so there'd be a coordination between their auditor and the town's auditor in, in some way. That the town's auditor doesn't have to do a complete audit redo. They can rely on the, the work product of that other auditor, but there has to be some level of communication review. So I would imagine, yeah, the audit would go up a, a, a little bit, a few thousand dollars or something like that.
So I think our audits typically per year are like seventeen to twenty thousand range. So maybe like another couple thousand dollars.
Probably something like that, right?
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
See Daly?
Does this require any staffing from our perspective to actually manage the?
I mean, so, I mean, from the accounting, uh, perspective, yeah, we would add, we, there would be a little bit extra to add that in to the, we would get the financial statements.
Okay, just from the financial perspective.
And we would add that in. But as far as, um, managing, I, you know, I don't think that would change.
No, like program management of housing. Okay. Um, my other question too is kind of opposite maybe of what we've been discussing. We've been worried about what the uh, the board might do that we didn't have control over. Would this put at risk our community housing if this board were to choose or make cuts in budget? Like, for example, could we make decisions that we shouldn't be? Um, that risks affordable housing in any way if that were included in our financials?
I mean, so currently I, I, I don't believe the board has, this board has any direct ability to impact the budget or, or make cuts or anything like that. That's actually one of my arguments as to why it, it's not really a component unit because you don't have that control. I mean, it's a very, you could look like it about very roundabout control. Well, you're the ones that appoints the members, but as far as like adopting the budget and making budget cuts, I, I don't think you would have that control or authority, which was, which is what makes it seem odd to have it as a component unit in the town's financial statements, but
Okay.
that's one of the things to look at.
This confusion also worries me because I would hate that if we were to declare them as component units or go, you know, with that direction, if suddenly that gives this board authority that we shouldn't have. So I want to definitely make sure that we're being careful in that, in that sense.
Ms. Bruin?
May I? Thank you. If I may, uh, thank you for getting to the bottom of the auditor's confusion. We'll, we'll find out, uh, if we can get to the bottom of that. So if I were you, I would be asking what your liability is. If there's a perception that you control the Housing Authority, there might also be a perception that you should fund shortfalls or that you should take responsibility for. fund shortfalls or that you should take responsibility for different management decisions. Housing Authority Boards can be the town board. Because you have appointed a citizen board at this point in order to remove them, let's say, you just wanted to be the housing authority board. You could. You would have to remove them for cause. And then you could act as the housing authority board. Some communities do that. Some communities staff a housing authority as part of city government. Most do not because most want that, that separation for the liability reasons.
Trustee Mason.
I appreciate a lot of the clarity that you brought here. I, I think I would certainly be interested in hearing what the auditor says and getting the remarks in that regard. But before we provided some real clear direction, so.
Reverend Ten.
I concur, trustee Mason.
Trustee Gator.
Yes, I agree with him. And it looks like there could be a legal, some legal problems there if we do keep control. But how can we do that and still have at least a little bit of oversight? You know, I think the town still needs to have some oversight somewhere here. So I don't know if we can write that into the situation or.
I think that would be the backstop she was discussing.
Okay, thank you.
So the only question I have, and I don't know which one of you might be able to answer this better. There is new legislation coming up about affordable housing and how those monies are divided between communities, municipalities. What I'm curious on is if we say that this entity is Wellington, but not Wellington, but it is Wellington. How do those grant funds and future funding for housing here? How are they possibly affected by that when we are removing ourselves kind of from the situation?
Right. I assume you're talking about the Prop one twenty-three funds. It will not affect them at all. You can apply, the housing authority can apply. They're really applied for by project, by development. And we've been having a lot of conversations with your planning director about whether you opt in to Prop one twenty-three, whether you make that commitment to make the town of Wellington eligible. I think that there's a lot of finessing that still needs to happen with that legislation. And my guess is we'll see some legislative fixes in this next session. But regardless, that does not affect your ability or the housing authority's ability to access those funds either way. Thank you for the question.
Yeah, I, I'm on long line with trustee Mason. Everybody here, just see what comes back with. But thank you both for coming in and presenting and helping get some clarity. Trustee Gator?
Yes, I know any questions. I agree. I think getting hearing back, excuse me, from the auditors is helpful. I do, where I see that there could be issue, not even from necessarily bad things happening, but just from a standpoint is if we have our process that we go through for appointments. So let's say we currently, the boards are the same and we have someone that drops out. And then we have vacancy on both boards. We do our advertisement, we'll find somebody, but somebody on the housing board is like, oh, I know my buddy. Let's, let's go and appoint him. And now they filled that seat, but we still have a vacancy. So then we fill that seats. And now we've got, and then it just can end up getting really goofy and strange. So my preference would be to not go down that road. And the other thing, I know we, it'd be really tough to do backstops if everything has to go through that. Because yes, they can't sell real estate, but they could enter into bad maintenance contracts or cancel maintenance contracts and things like that. And if it comes to a point where it does get to its board that we haven't appointed and we have no ability to control that, that would be a concern. So I want to hear back from the auditors, like is this, what's it going to cost us? Is there going to be risk to us as a board? But I think just having the ability to make sure that, hey, we're putting people in there. And if there's, if it does become an issue, making sure that, I don't know what the step would be if we're not involved in that board, who steps in if they're going crazy? That's my only thought on that piece.
Thank you.
All right. We will wait to hear back from the auditors and I want to thank Don. I did bring him into this, this afternoon. He's been so busy with the audit. I really didn't want to, or not with audit, but with the budget, budget and audit. But it has been just really busy. So I kind of briefed him this afternoon and goes, let me make some phone calls. And he's been great with being able to get that information. So I appreciate his time. So we will, we will get with the housing authority, we'll get with Julie, we'll get with the auditors and provide you an update at another meeting.
Perfect.
Sound good?
Thank you. All right. Next up will be the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, will you please read the title items for the consent agenda?
Item E one, August twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, special meeting minutes. Item E two, September twelfth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting minutes. Item E three, resolution number thirty-five dash twenty twenty-three, Cleveland Avenue Improvement Survey Contract Award.
Do I hear a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
May I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously and the consent agenda is approved.
Thank you. Uh, next we'll move on to action items. Will the clerk please read the title of item F one?
F one, continued ordinance number zero nine dash twenty twenty-three, annexing Sage Farms annexation and Village at Sage Farms annexation and annexation agreements, including establishment of vested development rights.
Mr. Bird, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Before you dive too deep into this, would you guys mind turning that monitor in the back a little bit? Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mr. Bird.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees, Cody Bird, Planning Director. We have a, our recommendation on this particular item is, is a little bit shorter than we anticipated. As a quick recap, we presented the proposed annexation of Sage Farms and the Village at Sage Farms, approximately three hundred acres of land adjacent to the south end of town. We presented that the August twenty-second meeting and we conducted a public hearing for the annexation for the zone, proposed planning development zoning map and vested development rights for the property. And at the, at the end of that public hearing, the board closed the public hearing and adopted a resolution finding that the annexation was eligible and it met the statutory requirements and state constitutional requirements for annexations. So that concluded your public hearing obligation for that item. Then we also presented additional staff reports for annexation agreements, which included the terms of the vested development rights period. And we included the zoning map P U D. And there's a desire to have all of those items because they're so interrally twined, intertwined, to keep them together in the same process moving forward so that one doesn't get approved and something else didn't get approved that nullifies the whole decision making process. So there were some additional details that needed to be worked out regarding particularly the irrigation wells on site and the water rights and the dedication to satisfy town water contribution requirements for that particular property. And we didn't yet have the details of that ironed out to present recommendations to the board. So we requested it be tabled to tonight. Unfortunately, there is still more information that we need to gather for that conversation. We're still working with the developer owner to figure that process out and find a recommendation that staff supports and recommends to the Board of Trustees. So we are requesting some additional time in order to have those conversations and really make sure that that recommendation is agreeable to both the owner and town staff can recommend it and feel comfortable that the board would support that as well. Mr. Darren Roberson is the owner and developer for this particular application and is here tonight as well. We had recommended in the staff report tabling this item to November fourteenth. That was at the time we wrote the staff report and published the packet. Since that time, we've had some additional conversations regarding desired timelines. Mr. Roberson, did you want to speak to, to any of this for your application?
Hi, Darren Roberson. I think what we're finding out, guys, is we're needing information back from town staff too. We're bringing back multiple projects. This isn't our only, only project going on. So we're finding out as we're getting a roadblock because we have too much, we're trying to separate saddleback in this subdivision. We really feel like saddleback is probably more pressing so the town can get permits going so we can be moving dirt. So Cody told me if I'm wrong, but I think what we're feeling like now is instead we want to table Sage Farms annexation to December twelfth instead of November fourteenth, so that we can solely focus on saddleback. So that we get comments back from town staff and engineering. Because this, and, and both these projects are huge projects. They get everybody's head wrapped around. And I think by bringing them both through at the same time, it's actually made it harder for town staff. We've been working on it for three, four, or five years. Just like you, they've only been working on it for a month or two and it's just too much to get wrapped around. So with that recommendation, instead of doing November fourteenth, we'd like to table this so that we can be ready for December twelfth and solely focus on saddleback. Hopefully coming through in front of you guys on November fourteenth. So. And, and, and two things, another thing too is, um, you guys did have, asked for a concept drawing. We can pass this around if you like. So we have that kind of an idea. This is just a concept. It could change, but it kind of shows more of the open space. There's a lot of planning, a lot of stuff that's already been done and still needs to be done on this project. I don't think anybody understands how big it is. So, but, and we want to do it right. And it's, it's a great project. It's going to be a great project for the town. But again, we, we also think we need to focus on saddleback because I think you guys need permits. And if we don't get saddleback and some of these going, then you can probably plan on about thirty-five permits a year for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. So that's why we're, I think we're pressing harder on saddleback now. So, and any questions since the last meeting on Sage Farms?
Trustee Gator.
So I guess the main question I have, do we want to kind of try and pull questions together and go through those tonight? Would it be better to bring those back in December? Because if we're tabling to December, I don't, I, it sounds like you guys have a lot on your plates right now. So I don't know if us adding more questions onto that would be helpful now and just better to bring those back in December.
Um, for, thanks for the question, trustee Gator. From, from my perspective, I think it would be best for discussion type items to occur when the board is reconsidering this for possible action. I did discuss with Mr. Roberson as well, though, that if there, you've had some time to think about this. We did include the supporting materials in your packet again because we didn't want it to feel like you didn't have the information for the item. So if you did have questions or feedback, we'd be happy to take that, yeah, ideas so that we can consider that and bring it back to you and be fully informed and make sure we have the information ready for that future meeting date.
I think mostly for mine is just discussion and kind of working through things and understanding things. So I think that I'm good with putting those together. And if I do come up with something, I can get that over to Mr. Bird so that you guys can, so if I come up with things in the meantime, I can get that over to you so you can prepare it and have answers ready for that. So I, I'm good for today.
Trustee Daly.
I appreciate the strategic planning and scheduling. So thank you for being flexible.
No questions. Appreciate it, Darren.
No questions. Thank you.
I have questions, suggestions, because you said you were open to suggestions, ideas. As far as the generalized idea, and I guess you can answer this one, do you have any partnerships with any of the housing entities? So Habitat builders that builds the low income housing, kind of like in Berthoud, are you partnering or pairing with any of them?
We have not yet. I mean, we're just trying to get it annexed and platted, but as we plat, all things can be considered.
Got it. Which is awesome. Um, my other question is, is it's still, so these green areas right here, are those all pocket parks? Is that the generalized idea?
Pocket parks, open space, some places doesn't make sense to have houses backing up to that roundabout. So we'll try to have a pocket park areas there too. Trying to have it a regional larger park area, that thirty-two acres, I don't think anybody realizes right now the biggest park in Wellington's twelve acres. You know, we're opposing twenty to thirty-two acres depending on how things fall out. But yeah, and this is, this could change. It all depends on how street layouts work. We're going to have to have a place to put the non-pot water so there'll be additional open spaces. But kind of give you an idea that there is more open space than what we originally were showing.
My only other ask would be, um, full accessible parks for people with disabilities. So that would be one of my huge things. If you guys have any tentative plans or anything like that is to allow for that.
Yeah, um, great comment, trustee Teets, and thank you. Definitely something that we all want to be cognizant of. Traditionally, if it's a, if it's a community park, the developers are not responsible for constructing the park improvements, doing the design and construction of it. They're only required to dedicate the land for regional parks or for, for community parks. The pocket parks, if it's owned and maintained by an HOA, then there would be the developer or the HOA designing and constructing their amenities, whether it's Sage Meadows has a clubhouse and a swimming pool that I think has accessible facilities there. Not all of our HOAs have that same arrangement, but it is, and then we would encourage moving forward. Any town parks that the town is responsible for constructing or designing and constructing, we would certainly want to include accessibility and accommodations in those designs. But those design processes would be an effort outside of the annexation and development process.
Quick question. From what I was reading in here, it sounded like the, the commercial part is kind of at the very tail end of the development. Is that correct? And my question would be why? And if we could start getting the commercial going fairly quick, possibly we could get something on the interchange down there too, which would be greatly helpful to the town.
That's what we got to separate. We think the nine acres of commercial will go fairly quickly. We got to get the infrastructure down there to that commercial site. And I don't think anybody, even town staff, engineer, it has any idea what that's going to cost. That's kind of why our annexation agreement is so difficult to understand and why we put so many things in it so that both sides are kind of protected. But again, we're working with Kevin Unger with UC Health. I think that's going to be the driver that they're going to want it sooner than later. And then we're going to have to find out how do we, how do we get the infrastructure there on site to get it there and in that timeline. But this project's so big, guys, I don't think we're even going to get it to the second farm, if you're familiar with it, for four to five or seven years. So it just takes time. But the sooner we get to the, sooner we have the sanitary and the water and all that, the sooner you get the commercial.
Thank you.
Perfect. I have no questions, Darren. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bird. Public comment. Uh, anybody from public like to comment on this item? Going once, going twice. So. All right. Um, cool. Do I hear a motion on this agenda?
I move the, to continue consideration of the ordinance number nine, twenty twenty-three, the annexation agreement to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees to be held on December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three at six thirty P M at the Wilson Leaper Center. I'm not going to read the addresses.
Second. May I get a roll call, Mr. Clerk? Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously and the item is continued to the December twelfth regular meeting. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Will clerk, please read title for item F two?
Item F two, resolution number thirty-four dash twenty twenty-three fireworks contract.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees. Before you tonight is a contract for the twenty twenty-four Fireworks Show with Beelake Productions. Mr. Brian Erlich is online. He is the owner of Beelake Productions and has been providing our show for several, several years. I don't actually have the number in front of me, but he has provided a proposal that breaks down cost as well as a proposal that explains what types of fireworks are provided and what that looks like. So if you turn to the staff memo is broken out between the fireworks, like the actual shells that will be shot off versus the audio, video, video production that is put on. Previously has been at the middle school, was at I Stone last, or at, yeah, I Stone last year, this past year. And I'm going to turn it over to Brian just to kind of give an explanation of the cost increases and what that looks like.
Thanks, Hallie. Thank you for seeing us, trustees. We have been monitoring the pyrotechnic situation very closely. And we are seeing, uh, good news is, is we are seeing a decrease in shipping, which has been one of the main contributors for price increases for the last two years since the pandemic. And shipping prices have dropped down. And shipping prices have dropped down um, to just about twenty thousand dollars a container, down from forty-three thousand dollars in twenty twenty-one. Um, but still three times the level they were in twenty nineteen, uh, when they were about sixty-five hundred dollars. Um, so while that's good news, um, we are still seeing increases. Uh, on products and, and um. Uh, of about anywhere from nine to eleven percent. Across the board on products, but with the decrease in shipping. We're able to curb that increase in product down to about four and a half percent. Um, also. Uh, we are seeing across the board increases mainly labor caused with the uh, video screen and audio. Portion of the show that we do for you guys, um, which is a, a pass through where we use Space Farmer. Pretty, or uh, uh, outdoor cinema network uh, and uh, Rock Fan. For the audio, uh, they, they just gave me estimates at this time to um. And said that you ought to just add a ten percent increase. So I did that. Uh, it may not be that high when we get down to it and we find a, get the final pricing in place next spring. Um, and the same goes for the fireworks. I'm just going off what my suppliers are telling me. And uh, hopefully there will be maybe uh, a softening on prices. And we'll see the nine or maybe less percent on the increase and with the shipping, it'll be less, but. Insurance is also going up. Uh, the base part is going up about ten percent, and then we have the adder for the extra two million dollars of coverage. Um. Uh, Christie at uh, right at Rochacor out in Grand Island, Nebraska, told me that that probably. Will stay uh, consistent, but the base prices continue to rise. So we looked at all the different contributors to the show and put together a best. You know, um, what do you want to call it? A good, good faith estimate of what we're, we're gonna have. Um, last year, if you recall, we had just a, a wonderful day of wind, rain, hail. And other contributors that caused us to not provide the video portion of our, our show. We still had to pay for all of that because it was a last minute decision to cancel. But the good news is, is that we will not have to charge nearly as much to. Create the new movie, because we're gonna play the movie that we had this year planned. So I do need to make some updates in dates and things that are in that presentation. But we'll be able to cut two thousand dollars out of the price for that. So. Oh, when we look at all the prices uh, going down the board and total everything up. Um, last year, oh, Hallie, you might have to help me. I don't have last year's contract in front of me, but. When we total it all up, we came to a two point eight percent increase overall. On the, on the uh, whole production uh, to do exactly what we've been doing. For the last uh, nine years, Hallie. Uh, this will be our tenth year with the town and um, uh, so we'll be just uh. The, a two point eight percent increase, which. You know, well below standard inflation rates. Of course, we are taking the two thousand dollars off for the um. Rework of the last year's video. But uh, we should be able to provide the same amount of, of uh, of uh, product. And uh, and put on another great show as we have. Um, other than that, that's pretty much about all we had. I mean, one thing that. Um, we also put a small increase on was our labor. Um. Labor, you know, getting help is not easy and getting help on the Fourth of July is even harder. So we are paying a pretty good, pretty good um, way, you know, uh, we, we do contract workers. And we pay them pretty well to come out on the Fourth of July and give up their Fourth of July to set up fireworks. And they do a great job. Last year, the guys worked exceedingly over and above with all the delays. And the rain and covering stuff up. That uh, the good news was, is we had a, we had ninety-eight point three percent of the shit, of all the queues go off. And we've been averaging about ninety-eight point eight percent. So we saw a very minimal decrease. In successful shells and cakes going off, even though we had close to three quarters of an inch of rain. Throughout the day and incredible wind and uh, and, and things, so. Um. So we, we uh, we were able to put on that, a good show for you guys. We want to be able to do that again. So. Do you have any questions?
Trustee Teats?
Um, no, the only thing that I have is, is looking at, I know we were discussing, discussing as far as the budget goes. At giving or discussing a not to exceed fifty thousand amount for fireworks. I don't know kind of where you guys are at with that. Um, I know I don't want to see the video go anywhere. That makes our Fourth of July. Um, but if there's any way that. Say two thousand eight seventy could come off of the firework display itself to keep it at that even. Fifty thousand mark. When we're trying to save money, but also looking at raises, adding additional stuff for the town. I just want to make sure that we're being. Responsible in that manner. Um, but other than that, that's the only thing I really have.
Mr. Wigan?
Same thing. So uh, yeah, if we could try to keep it down to the fifty that we were discussing. I don't know if that's feasible or not, but it'd be interesting to see what you'd have to say.
It's, yeah, it's, it's always feasible by reducing the amount of product. And we could reduce the, some of the larger cakes to smaller cakes. We can, I mean, there, there are things we can do, definitely. But to do a apples to apple show is what we've done for the last several years. Um, it would depend upon when the prices come in in January. Um. At the, the, this, this proposal here is definitely a not to exceed. And if we don't see those increases after the first year, it's just in this, in this economic environment. It's so hard to forecast what a commodity that comes from China. Is gonna cost um, eight months from now. Um, the good news is, is that containers land in late December, January and early February. And so we will get established pricing at that time, but. To put a number down right now and say, oh, I'm fine. I'm sure they're only gonna go up four and a half percent, or they're only gonna go up two and a half percent. I, I really can't say that. Um, but we can get it down to fifty thousand dollars if you're willing to take a. Cut in part of the product that we shoot.
Quick question. Of the total fifty-two thousand, the actual cost of the fireworks. How much is that? Do you have an idea?
Um, the actual cost of the fireworks is right at twenty-three, right at twenty-three thousand.
Oh, yeah. So line number three, as you look at the atomized list.
Perfect.
So we probably could reduce that closer to twenty thousand.
But yeah, so you're looking at about a ten percent decrease as far as the material there.
Right. So if you go to this, I don't know, um, do you have the uh, the uh, firework, you have the fireworks list there? If you just go down. To the second page, there's a shell count by size. We would just have to reduce most of those by about, you know, maybe ten percent. Which would be.
Page two nineteen on the packet.
Thank you.
So we'd be down around two hundred and ten, three inch shells. A hundred and twenty-five, four inch shells, ninety-five inch. A hundred and five, six inch, we'd probably still shoot the. The twelve, eight inches, although that's the most expensive shell. Those shells run about a hundred to seventy dollars a piece. We could reduce the number of eight inch shells. That would cut the price. Also, when you go down on that page, actually, you would have to go to the next page. Or even the next page. Of where we start showing the cakes. Which are. Way down towards the bottom. It starts with a, with a quantity of two, of a two and a half inch Knights Over America. Those cakes run close to three hundred dollars a piece. And so if we were to take some of those out, go from a three inch to a two inch cake. Um, you know, things like that. Uh.
I think.
Take some of these cakes out.
Recommendation is out of this, we can kind of maybe go through those details later. I think that might be better time served elsewhere. Okay. Thank you though for, that, that doesn't mean anything to me, unfortunately, just because I don't know.
I'm sorry.
But I trust, I trust that you do. So based on a recommendation, I know you'll make the best choice there.
Well, and one thing that I do know about Fourth of July fireworks is that if you scale it back or make any adjustments down, every year we set the bar higher and higher. And if you try and cut corners, people are gonna notice. And I, the, the fireworks is the one community event that we really take a lot of pride in. And so that I'm. Completely comfortable in the adjustments to the pricing that he's provided. It's completely justified. Trying to find a pyro, another pyrotechnician that is qualified and pro- provides the caliber that he does. It's not gonna happen. So I think that we're pretty fortunate to have. Brian to, to provide our fireworks show. Um, I think he does a really good job trying to provide a reasonable proposal based off of what our expectations are, but at the same time. Trying to maintain his. The artistic proprietary aspect of a fireworks show that every year there's an expectation that it has to be just a little bit bigger and just a little bit better. So that we draw those people that might have gone to Windsor or Fort Collins, because. Every extra car that passes through the gas station or stops at the dollar store to buy Band-Aids is extra sales tax revenue. So I am, I'm a hundred and ten percent supportive of what Mr. Ehrlich is asking for fireworks.
Thank you.
I agree too, and just wanted to see what the feasibility would be as far as cutting it down. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Mason?
Yeah, Mr. Ehrlich, I just want to thank you for the last nine years. I think I've seen about seven of those and Fourth of July certainly my favorite holiday, and I think. Uh, it's pretty near and dear to a lot of our residents. So um, I think last year's budget, uh, we had budgeted fifty-one, four oh seven. So this year, that's a difference of a. One thousand four hundred sixty-three dollars. I, I'd be completely fine with uh. Approving this, um, maybe just saying a not to exceed amount of the contract amount fifty-two, eight seventy.
Thank you, Trustee Mason. Trustee Daly?
Uh, I may have some unpopular thoughts on this, but I do want to share them. Uh, last year, all the costs associated with the video show were completely wasted. Based on the fact of the weather. Weather on Fourth of July is not a new thing. Every single year, we have fear of or actual. Significant weather activity on Fourth of July. This is. The season and where we live, right? So that's going to be a threat this year as well. Last year had significant wasted money that we could just not use, but not recover. Um, the point of fireworks is that it is huge. So we can see it regionally. The video shown itself is only for very localized people who are going and attending at that location. Um, if we're serving the larger community, I think not paring down the actual fireworks would be. What we need to provide to the greater Wellington area. Um. I do love the music. We listened and tuned in on the radio. I would definitely say. That the pyro musical scripting and sequencing is still very important and valuable to anybody watching from anywhere. A lot of people watch from their cars. This is how drive-ins work now, radios, right? Uh, we don't have to be there to listen it. We're not waiting for them to stream the music at us. We use our own devices and tune in. So. I would think to get the, the savings that we're looking for, the not to exceed over fifty thousand. I would recommend that we strike the video screen, projection, sound and audio rental. And instead, uh, we do it through FM. And I think we can still provide the biggest, baddest show around. That we want to do, um, but then also make sure that that's available for everyone, uh, without having to be concerned about the budget. So. Um, that's, that's my feedback.
Thank you. Trustee Gator?
Yep. So I think a lot of good points have been made um, by the board members, and I agree, you guys have done a great job with the show. And yeah, people do come from all around to see it. Um. I understand like the, the increase is not a large amount, but the challenge is, is it keeps going up and it keeps going up and it keeps going up. And it's not, that's not anything Mr. Ehrlich's fault, but I think that. What I would prefer to see is even if we say, okay, we're good with it this year, that we set a baseline not to exceed and then maybe build in, okay, a two percent. And then just say, build us what you can within that budget versus just whatever it comes in at. And just give us the biggest and the baddest and the greatest. And I understand, yes, it's one thousand dollars or it's two thousand dollars difference this year. But when you just set the precedent, as people have said, it's always bigger, it's always better. But at the same time, we've got people complaining about potholes. We've got people complaining about broken things at parks. And it's like every dollar that we're spending on something here where we could still provide an amazing show. That could be utilized elsewhere. Um, so I would like to look at putting in place something, even if we say we're okay with the increases this year, but to say, okay, this is. We're putting a cap at a two percent increase unless, you know, we can, the board can, future boards can always come back and say, no, we want more than a two percent. But just build that in and then Mr. Ehrlich knows, hey, I'm, I'm gonna build you the best show I can. With the knowledge that, you know what, we're looking at, trying to keep it within two percent, because we understand inflation's gonna happen and that's nothing with it outside of his control. Or is outside of his control. Sorry, said that wrong. Um, so understanding that, yes, fifty thousand dollars today is not gonna be what fifty thousand dollars is ten, ten years from now. But we can say, okay, we want to limit our increase in this area of our budget to this amount every year. So that we don't just see it get out of control. Um, so that's my thought. The other question I have, because I agree, I think the video is a great tool. I don't know what the costs of having a screen and audio system in, because I mean, we spend a lot of money on that every year. Does it make sense to look at actually purchasing equipment that we could utilize for that? And then that can also be used at other things around the town. We could use it at other events. We've talked about doing concerts and things in the parks and. Could we utilize that equipment for the same thing? And that would, yes, it would be a one-time larger CIP. There'd obviously be maintenance and things like that. I'd love to see what would it look like for us to say, let's buy our own equipment, so we're not having to constantly. Because again, that's not, we're not supporting our fireworks vendor. We're just paying some other company to bring stuff in. Um, so that was my thought on that piece. And that would, again, yes, we'd be paying money one time upfront out of the CIP. But it would help reduce those recurring costs. So then again, we can say, hey, we don't have to cut down. We can keep the video. And we also don't have to cut down the number of shelves. So that was kind of my thoughts on that.
Yeah, I think what you said made a lot of sense. Um. I'm not in favor of getting rid of the video, just because there's a lot of people that ride or die for that. Um. Yeah, um. But I, I, I think, I mean, I'm along the lines of, yeah, let's, you know. Approve it, what it is right now. I mean, there's no reason for us to. To flake back on the biggest event this town has, what we're known for on the Fourth of July. Um, but also be wise about it in the future with. You know, something along the lines of like what trustee Gator said, the two percent increase. Um, my only clarification I want there, trustee Gator, would that be year over year?
Yeah, that was just a thought, would just kind of build into the budget. And I don't, probably we'd do like a resolution, so that can always be changed. Like future boards would just say, hey, we understand. And it could be something saying like.
So we do that during budget?
Yeah, it's not something we just do overnight, but yes, during budget, we're just, as we see this and we think it's important to continue this, therefore this board resolves that the fireworks budget. Will increase year over year by a maximum of two percent. And then again, future boards can always just say, hey, we want to do something different. A resolution does not mean. They ha- they can always just say, nah, we want more. And it's super easy to do it. So.
Okay.
But I think it would be good, because then it. One for Mr. Ehrlich, he knows, like every year, this is what I can see. And then if he's just like, hey, guy, he can always come back to us and say. I'm not gonna be able to give you a good show just based on things and that, and that's a decision on our end. Okay. All right, you know what? We're gonna, we know this was the idea, but we really want that show. We're gonna go above that two percent. Or he can say, hey, good news. I can get, I can get you a great show within that two percent.
Perfect. Um, okay. So. Um, anybody else have any further comments from the board before public comment?
Mr. Ehrlich might have had.
Oh, you, yes, Mr. Ehrlich.
Yeah, and I just, just understand that I, I don't have the hard pricing yet. And that we can, we can maneuver some things around and see if we can get lower pricing on that product. And you know, we will know in January what the firm number is, and we can set this number not to exceed. I'm fine with the two percent annual increase that I can know ahead of time. If I see products on sale, some products on closeout that I know are good product. I can maybe purchase those ahead of time and save money there. You know, it's just knowing a lot more in advance of what I can do. So, um. I'm fine with that, and I'm fine to come back in January, probably first week of February, when I should have all my hard numbers. In place and say, yes, we talked about fifty-two, whatever it is. Fifty-two, eight, but we're really going to be able to come in at fifty-seven, thirty-one or whatever it is.
Okay. Perfect. Uh, any public comment on this item?
Hello strangers, Lowry Moyer, Harrison Avenue. Um, shocker, I agree with everyone who's spoken on the board. Um, I think that, uh, our firework show is something that everyone can be proud of. I have friends that flock from out of town to come see it. So I definitely agree that decreasing our show, um, is not the right way to go. But I would ask that some other things be considered in terms of like compromises. So when we're looking at the video, I agree with you, um, Trusty Daly, that it is a. One of the largest expenses in the entire event. And so looking at ways that we could do that more economically, which could include Trusty Gators, um, you know, looking at something that we could purchase. That could work year after year for events over events. And then also, um, when we talk about accessibility, I think it might be interesting to entertain in this age of technology. Bringing that to a streaming platform like we do our meetings. So that if you cannot make it to the field or the mosquitoes are too bad that night, which they usually are. Then you can feel comfortable tuning in, listening to the music and watching the video from your home. Um, I think that would be impactful for a lot of people in our town. And then my final point, um, and this is just an observation. Would be to say that I think it would be. Good of you all to consider that while we are talking about increasing. The cost of the show. We have been looking at how much it costs to bring accessibility and voting to people that might not be able to attend a polling place. And so I think that, um, the fact that there are also people that can't access an in-person polling place for whatever reason, whether they're deployed. Or, um, they just can't access it. Uh, I think it's important to consider. What is truly important here? And if we're going to say that we can spend two thousand or sixteen hundred extra dollars here. Then we really need to consider what the value we are placing on. Um, the opportunity for our voters to be able to have their voices heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Uh, Lisa Cholay, seventy-four, twenty-four, Home Stretch Drive. Um, I agree a lot with, uh, what Ms. Moyer said. One of the things that I would like to point out is that. One of the first traditions I heard about when I moved here was that video. It's very impactful. It's something nobody else does. And so while I think a long-term solution and an investment is a good idea. I don't want to see us invest in something long-term like that when we have other pressing financial matters. We have, you all know, some serious things coming down the pike that could cost this town a lot of money. I think the return on investment of the Fourth of July. Far outweighs fourteen hundred dollars. Um, so I think we need to embrace the fact that that is the thing that we're still most well-known for. And lean into that, lean into the positive with the spirits of our residents and the people that come and visit. And not nickel and dime this one thing that does only good things for our town. And eliminating the video while I recognize. Why that might be cost-effective. It is the thing that keeps Wellington, Wellington and will. Create more divisiveness than is intended by the people who've lived here the longest. And I would hate to see us do that as a community. It is something that's very, very important to a lot of people, new and longtime residents. Um, and finally, I would just say, I appreciate the thoughtfulness that you guys put into this. I appreciate that you're trying to be respectful of every single dime. Um, this isn't the issue. So I, in my opinion, obviously, um. But I would encourage you to take the same tenacity to some things that maybe aren't quite so obvious and how we, we spend a lot of money here needlessly. So thanks.
Thank you.
Christine Gator, I just want to say the streaming option is a great idea. Um, I know that we don't go for the crowds and we, and we watch it in our car. And, um, and I would love to be able to see it and hear the video from home. I think that would be a great option. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um. Do I hear a motion on this item?
Can I make one more comment before we move on? So the goal and decision behind trying to look at some of this funding in general is because of the fact that. We have a lot coming before us and looking at increases in cost of water rates again. And increases in multiple areas. I'm anywhere that we can try to conserve when we have raises that are being asked for. And we have all of this extra cost that's coming. We still have a responsibility to a balanced budget. Brian Ehrlich has delivered an amazing show and it's the generalized idea that pretty much anything coming before our board for additional cost right now. I am always going to question, what can we do for this right now to make sure that we are not. Increasing the debt that's coming into the town. I understand it's a huge financial gain for sales tax revenue. But I don't hear people coming before us and speaking to us and asking for us to give them more firework in the show. I do however, have people coming before us telling us that they can't afford their monthly bills right now. That they, there's trails and parks that need to be fixed. There's a lot of things and I would be the last person asking for a decrease in our Fourth of July activities. But right now we also have a lot more to take into account. And we've got some propositions that are coming before our taxpayers. That could very well decrease our funding even more this year, this next year. So it's just of a great concern. And I want to make sure that we're protecting everything we can. Um, Brian, you know, I appreciate everything you do for the town. Um, I'm grateful for the experience he has given my family over the many years.
Quick, a quick comment. Um. This is another example of potentially how we were discussing, we're looking at like certain rentals for every single event, all those kinds of things. So I, as we're considering CIP projects and we're talking about a potential for a stage or a show with sound and. A, a projector. I mean, the wasted seven thousand dollars from last year that we couldn't use. This year's seven thousand dollars was plus other events that utilize those kinds of things. I, I really hope that we're taking that into consideration. It's not necessarily like this extra necessary expense, but actually improving potential for these type of activities again in the future. And the video, you guys have compelled me. I'm not, you know, I haven't personally even, I've seen it only once. Um, so I appreciate that feedback and the fact that it's so important is really important because this is the heart and soul of Wellington is Fourth of July. So I, I think that's good to know. I was just thinking if we have to cut somewhere, do we cut it for the greater Wellington or cut it for the few who are there? So, but I mean, you compelled me already. So I feel good on it and I, I'm ready to vote.
Perfect.
I just had a question for Mr. Ehrlich. So if we were to go forward and as a part of our budgeting and CIP come up with, hey, we do want to do a stage and all this audio stuff. Would you be able to amend that and remove those costs out if we are able to provide those things?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And now, and I was sitting here thinking while we're talking, we, um, we increased. The audio and the size of the screen in the second year based on requests. We went from a thirty-foot screen to a forty-foot screen. We went from, uh, four speakers to six outdoor speakers. I can talk to those contractors, you know, I can talk to those third-party partners and. If we want to go down to a thirty-foot screen and go back to the thirty-foot screen and, and, and reduce the audio size a little bit onsite to maybe cut those costs. But no, if you guys decided to buy a screen and, and a sound system. I'm, that, that's no skin off my back. I mean, it's.
Okay, perfect. That, that's the only thing that's perfect. So we, we can readdress that down the road.
Yeah.
All right. Good questions, Trusty Gator. Um. Make a motion.
I'm happy to make a motion. Did we want to set the not to exceed to fifty-two, eight seventy?
Yes.
Okay. All right, um, I will make a motion to approve resolution number thirty-four dash twenty-twenty-three fireworks contract. Uh, with a not to exceed amount of fifty-two thousand eight hundred seventy dollars.
Second.
Make it a roll call, please. Trusty Mason.
Yes.
Yeah, Bertin McDonald.
Yes.
Trusty Teets.
Yes.
Trusty Gator.
Yes.
Trusty Wigan.
Yes.
Trusty Daly.
Yes.
Mayor Shessey.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously and the resolution is approved with the stated amendments.
Thank you.
Uh, recess five minutes. Perfect.
I tried to tell you, but you were like.
All right, I now call the September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Wellington Board of Trustees back in session, time being eight eighteen P M. And then we will have Ms. Garcia presenting to us today on a letter of support for Safe Routes to School, twenty twenty-three Reconnecting Communities Community Planning Grant.
Thank you, Mayor and Trustees, Patty Garcia, Town Administrator. This is an item that, um, I worked with Safe Routes to School on. Um, they are applying for a, um, community planning grant for the Reconnecting Communities Pilot Program. Which is funded through the Department of Transportation. The planning grant is for planning activities for future construction projects and for innovative community planning to address localized transportation challenges, which we all know we have. Um, as Wellington Safe Routes to Schools, a five oh one C three, they can apply for this grant on their own without having to have the town of Wellington participate. Um, that would, for us to participate with this, um, planning grant, we would have to have a memorandum of understanding in place, which we don't have yet at this time. Safe Routes to School will be applying for a five hundred thousand dollar grant, which would require twenty percent match. That match is not, the town of Wellington has not been requested to participate in that match, um, whether that's in kind or, um, through financial requests. But the town is willing to, to support this program and, and to make sure it's in alignment with our comprehensive plan. And to make sure it's compliant with any local and state and federal regulations. So the grant application deadline is very quick, September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. From what I understand, um, the Board of County Commissioners have this on their agenda today. I'm sure Safe Routes to School, um, board members can speak on that, but we were both entities, we're trying very quickly to get information. both entities were trying very quickly to get information together into our respective boards for approval before the deadline. And I know there's board members here, if you would like to have them speak on the topic.
Please do.
Good evening, trustees. Lisa Cholay, Chair and Executive Director of Safe Routes to School.
Lowry Moyar, her sidekick and Vice Chair.
Our granted administrator extraordinaire. We were notified approximately, I think 38 days ago of the notice of funding opportunity for the Reconnecting Communities Program. It's been partnered with the Neighborhoods Connecting Program. I forget what it's called. It's Reconnecting Communities and Neighborhoods. It's a big thing. There's 3.353 billion dollars available this year. So it's a unique opportunity with a lot of money at stake. Under the Reconnecting Communities portion of it, we can ask for up to $2 million. That's a big uh, matching amount for us. This has to be, well, it's asked to be uh, completed by the end of 2026. So there's still a substantial amount of time. With the way that the matching funds go and uh, in-kind match, we're confident that we can meet the 20% match at a the $500,000 grant amount. The intention um, of Safe Routes to School as it exists in general, but in this respect as well, is to provide a lift for the town of Wellington in a way that the town can't currently do for itself. Um, we all know staff is at its edges of abilities just based on capacity. And so our board is made up of people that represent unique abilities within the town and unique insight. You have three planning commissioners on that town. You have someone that's done the entire sidewalk inventory for the town of Wellington. And your current finance chair is also on that board. So we bring together a vast amount of knowledge about the town, the intentions of the town, the land use code, the comprehensive plan and all of those things. So this grant will allow us to provide community engagement, engage with consultants, to create a comprehensive transportation plan, multimodal transportation plan. To create opportunities for us to solve the connectivity problems that are through the the highway, I-25, plus Highway 1, plus the railroad. And those, most communities only battle one, maybe two of those, and we have three to battle. But the key to unlocking these funds in the future, whether it's through Safe Routes to School or through the town of Wellington or a partnership that we hope to have with you all with an MOU moving forward after this. Is to have a plan so that we have shovel-ready projects. We will never, as a town or as an organization, win a grant for a construction project for infrastructure if it's not shovel-ready. Shovel-ready requires a community plan. So it is the intention of the Board of Trustees, or the Board of Safe Routes to School, sorry. I'm close. Or Planning Commission or whatever, you know, no. It's the intention of the Board of Safe Routes to School to develop this community plan that is in alignment with the comprehensive plan, in alignment with the land use code. And hopefully, with your input as trustees and residents at the moments when we are gathering that input. And with the input of the Public Works Director and the Planning Director. So, um, and they're well aware of our intentions. We've made that clear for the better part of the last year.
Yep, I have a mint in my mouth. Um, this is just a great opportunity for community members. A, for the Department of Transportation, um, and the Colorado government to see that there's initiative here from the residents and that this is important to us. We've been underfunded, um, historically here in terms of improvements. And so, um, this is a fantastic opportunity for us to access funding that the staff may not have the bandwidth to do. And then also to partner with the town in collaboration to just improve and work further, further on um, those goals set forth in the comprehensive plan. So really, it's accessibility. The Public Works is already doing an amazing job. If you've been downtown, but there's a lot left to do and it's going to cost millions. And so with this plan, we can provide real, um, real structured plans on, you know, next steps and next phases and look at putting together a five, 10-year plan down the road so that we can really, really tackle some of those larger projects like the overpass and the underpass and the tunnel and the railroad. Thanks.
And the last thing I would add is that it would be our hope that your participation in this would eventually lead to this board being in full support of this plan because it will, it will bring about a list of priorities so that we're not going, oh, we can afford to do this. Oh, we should do this. But instead, a cohesive plan that makes the most efficient use of our money, our time and the resources that become available to us with this community plan.
Which is millions.
Any questions?
Awesome. Thanks. Uh, trustee Gator.
Uh, no questions. I appreciate you guys taking the initiative. As you mentioned, you, we've got a lot of priorities that we're always giving staff. They can't even always get through all those. So I appreciate you. A lot of people like to complain about things. I appreciate you guys taking initiative to try and find a solution. So thank you for finding a solution, bringing it to us. And I'm looking forward to figuring out how we can work together.
I commend you all, of course, as always, of being really dedicated and active members of the community and going a step above and beyond that and finding opportunities like this. So thank you so much for your efforts. Um, I do look forward to our conversations in the future for MOU. I think there's real potential, just needs more time. So I'm so happy that you found something that you can be go on right now. And I think that's fantastic because you definitely have a lot of support and a lot of need in this community to make safer routes to school. So, um, the, and then of course, any kind of tools like this or, or references will be wonderful resources in the future. So, thank you.
I'm super excited about this for you guys. I know I've had the opportunity to speak with all of our SRTS board members as far as uh, this project. And I'm really excited to see it finally, finally getting down the path that it needs to go. So, um, yeah, I'm fully in support of this and uh, yeah, let's, let's go.
Robert Tim. Trust me.
Appreciate what you're doing. I live over on the other side of the interstate and people are complaining about access, trying to get to school. And yeah, we need planning on that. I know we've talked about bridges going over and quite a few different things. So I think you guys are doing great and it or that.
I was really excited when I read about this grant a few months ago. So, um, excited to see that you guys are taking this on. I might, I'm worried about September 28th deadline with you guys. I'm not worried about a September 28th deadline. I thank you for the lack of sleep you're going to have in the next two days. But I think this is an awesome opportunity for us, not just now, but in looking at a lot of those grants. There's so much money available, so much. So I'm excited that we have someone that is not a part of our, our town, our board, that can go out and chase these things and not have to worry, no offense, about the government that's involved in going and chasing these things. I guess is the best way to say that without being disrespectful or rude about it, but.
You're good, you're good.
How do I say that? But I'm grateful. Thank you. Good luck.
Yeah, I mean, I applaud you guys. Way to band together and try to get stuff done and get money for this town. This is gonna, I mean, I imagine this is going to be huge for us down the road. Immensely. We need this. We need more citizens like you, residents like you. You guys, you're killing it. So keep it up. Uh, okay. Before I cry. Are there any comments from the public on this item? No. Okay. Do I hear a motion on this item?
I move that we approve the letter of support for Safe Routes to School.
I second that.
Perfect. May I get a roll call, please? Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Mayor Porton McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously and the letter is approved.
Thank you.
Next we go on to reports. Any reports from the town attorney?
Thanks for inviting. Actually, I gotta, I'm Brad March. For anybody that didn't know me, um, used to be here a lot, long time ago. Dan ended up coming down with some stuff and so he asked if I could show up and fill his shoes, which are hard to fill. So other than that, nothing's safe.
Thanks. Ms. Garcia, Town Administrator.
So on October 3rd, the Board of Trustees will be conducting another interview for the Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails vacancy. That interview will be at 5:30 P M. The work session will start at 6 P M for budget presentations, which will include a presentation by the Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails Advisory Board, the continuation of the Planning Department budget, five-year CIP and budget presentations from Public Works, Parks and Recreation, the town, community and administrative facilities and the cemetery. We'll go on ahead and provide a light dinner like Subway because it could be a long night and I want to make sure tummies are full and that, that kind of helps power through. As a reminder, the budget bonanza is scheduled for October 17th from 3 to 6 P M. And there will not be a work session that night. In preparation for the budget bonanza, staff has kind of talked about if there's opportunities for the Board of Trustees to participate. And we pitched the idea to uh, Mayor Shosse and Trustee Teets last week and, and kind of got mixed reviews. So thought I'd throw it out to the whole crew. So we were thinking about maybe having a booth for the trustees, like come and ask your trustee a question, like literally, I mean, let citizens come up. Do they have questions of trustees about what their role is, about decisions they've made, about the budget, about how to use the discretionary fund? There could be a lot of different topics we could kind of create for you to potentially engage with residents. Is that something the trustees would be interested in?
I would personally love to see that. What might be helpful is just create a little flyer of things we can't talk about. So like yeah, quasi judicial issues, just maybe, it'd just be good, like maybe print a couple of those, like hey, anything other than these things. Other than that, I think it's a great idea. Just, and I'd be happy to be present and I think it's great for us to be able to let people be like, hey, we're here. You can ask us questions or tell us your ideas too.
Exactly.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great idea.
So Board Direction, yay.
And you don't have to be here for the full time. You could come in for half an hour or 15 minutes and just, you know, have your business cards and have your name tagged on and just, it's an opportunity to meet. We do see, those of you who have attended, we do see a large range of residents that don't normally come to trustee meetings or anything like that. They, these are brand new people that sometimes don't know a thing. So thank you so much. We will go on ahead and get that scheduled and planned for y'all.
Great.
Thank you.
Uh, staff reports are included in the packet. Are there any questions from board on these items? No. Okay. Any board reports? No. I was like, wow, wow.
Wow, okay.
I wanted to give a big go Eagles announcement. Congratulations to our varsity football team in the Ag Bowl. And beating, of course, the Cubs 50 to 14. They were also, and I think this is so noteworthy, noteworthy because this is, this like gives me chills. So most of you probably know because I'm going to say over 91,000 people voted, but on Nine News, we were voted for the um, prep game of the week, right? And it was, they picked uh, local rivalries. Of course, we had one for Ag Bowl against Timneth, which we defeated twice now and only our two years of our program, but um, 91,000 people voted. I mean, our community is probably 12,000. Me, if, and that counts like toddlers, right? So um, this is and then, um, but I just want to say how proud I am of Wellington. Our high school Friday Night Lights is exactly what we need to be a community. It's people caring about and having commonalities and rooting for the same team. This is not just football I'm talking about, by the way, um, and showing up and voting on your phone. But the point is that everybody was engaged. My family in Florida voted, you know, it's, um, it's a beautiful thing and it made me so happy. And I'm so proud of our football team also. What a great, great show it was to watch that. And then, um, it, it was so much fun. So I wanted to acknowledge that, say congratulations and just say how proud I am of our community for our effort in supporting our football team. Thanks.
Perfect. Yeah, another game this Friday night.
Yep.
Cool. No board reports. All right. The board will now consider a motion to enter executive session for conferences with an attorney for the town pursuant to 24 dash 6 dash 204, 4B for the purpose of receiving legal advice relative to pending litigation related to the appeal of the site plan approval. The executive session will not be recorded and attorney certification will be provided as required by CRS 24 dash 6 dash 2 402, 2D point 5, 2B. That discussions um, in the executive session constitute privileged attorney-client communications. Do I hear a motion to enter the executive session?
I make a motion to enter the executive session.
I'll second.
Clerk, may I get a roll call, please? Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Mayor Porton McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
See Daly.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
My, also, if I could very quickly before you formally go into executive session. Uh, I'm Brad March, um, with, uh, March Allen Sapienza. The uh, one of the things we're probably going to ask the board to consider and at least give a tacit blessing to at the end of the meeting after we come out of executive session is retention of uh, Nicholas uh, Pope, a Pope, um, who uh, was recommended by Sursa as, as uh, co-counsel in conjunction with this matter.